Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberating, and justice for all.
We will move with that, so jump high to the first. So.
Second.
Motion to second, any further discussion? All those in favor? I'll slide with your board, I'll start with you, Charlotte. Well, that's good. Ron, now, what's up? Were they sweeping today? Is this sweeping today? Did this week become by or was that just painting?
Yeah, probably. No, I think it was state curbing.
Okay.
Yeah. We started last week, we did sidewalk. Yeah, it was last Tuesday. We did sidewalks on Monday and then we painted and did streets on Tuesday.
And where did I see that we have they spray painted the curb in white?
Stayed in. Across the street from the bank.
What's the, what's the perfect? Well, I was just curious as to if there's a reason that they painted it white like that.
It was like the break down lane.
Okay. Curious as to whether you're liberty to paint your curving? Or I didn't know you could do that. It could be white or green, stay there. Okay. That's all, that's all.
Can I make a, a comment on that?
Yeah.
When I was in Tennessee, I was with two of my sisters and one sister, we were, had walked across the parking lot to the office and there was a step up, there was a curb and it was black and she missed it and fell. Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
And if it had been white, like most of them are, she wouldn't have done that. So it, you know, that's one explanation.
I just, yeah, I like the way it made it pop, so.
Right.
I just like the way it looked, but.
Not so sharp anymore.
Good.
Yep. Uh, so the federal rescue plan money that was due to us in June, the state has again requested another extension, so that's another 30 days that they'll be holding on to our hundred and fifty something thousand. The next payment will come 12 months after we receive the first one. So still no timeframe there, but that 30 days just started re-ticking. The school referendum for August 31st, those absentee ballots are in house. Uh, and you can also now start requesting your November absentee ballot, but those won't be available to mail until early October. Your August 31st school referendum is a bunch of big building projects that are going to be paid for a lot of federal dollars. Just the size of it and the expansion footprints have to go to the lawyers for approval, so. That's what that is for, August 31st, November 2nd. Right now, the only thing that we have on the ballot will be the question submitted to the CMP quarter. Uh, you've also been attached to the end of the report, of the report that came from Superintendent Moody with regards to federal projects at the school, uh, federal money in the project business of school and where they're going to spend it. And they have appeared a public comment in terms of those allocations for slamming as well, so. Met with him about that and then also the proposal to move sixth graders from those streams to St. Louis Middle School. Uh, it's been something that's been widely discussed, we're seeing it happen more and more schools. And all of the children up in St. Louis already go to the middle school in the sixth grade. So this is something that we think is going to happen in the next year. It could happen after Christmas break, it could happen next.
You're in the middle of a school year to kids?
Yes.
That's.
And they're thinking that it's going to help with the transition and that with all of those kids being there, the access to athletics, that will actually be a positive, so they're soundboarding that in public and going to see how that goes. But they believe that the expansion on the middle school will be done after, before the end of Christmas break, so it would allow them to move them over. And it's only four classrooms. Uh, and the other thing is that they displaced other folks at this school because of head start allocations and whatnot too, so. That's still kind of up in the air, but that, that move will happen if not this academic year, the following. We received our dividend from municipal risk, uh, thirty three twenty two, and that's a combination between workers comp and unemployment. So that's a pretty much an annual payment unless we have a big mistake there. Uh, we had a CIP meeting, our capital improvement plan with FAA and DOT this morning. It looks like we're going to be able to do a full crack seal and pavement market project at the airport next year. And then the reconstruction of the taxi lanes at the four, five, six, seven, eight hundred rows will be pushed back to 2024 because they want to see everything happen, uh, construction happen all in one period for mobilization costs or whatnot. There's a potential that could get moved up, unlikely. Um, and then the design phase, we'd like to see the design phase earlier. And so that may be an opportunity for us to, um, we may have to fund out a pocket short term and then reimburse the grant the next year, but we're going to work with them on that. The other thing that was a big topic of discussion today that's just really now scratching the surface is the crosswind runway. So you're driving to the airport, the runway that runs straight out ahead, State Police uses it for training. Uh, that's runway three two one. It's our crosswind runway and the FAA is not terribly fond of maintaining crosswind runways. And we don't have the wind data to support maintaining that runway. So we're going to work with the state agencies that do benefit from it. The emergency response aspect of the airport, uh, to try to keep that runway maintenance on the table. So that's the next big project that we've got. It was bumped from four to six and a half million dollars, uh, as a federal project due to inflation. But right now, the FAA let that book on its plan because it's a crosswind runway and we don't have the data. So we're going to have to look at what we can do there to get that done. Uh, it will have wide ranging implications for pilots all the way down to emergency service providers, uh, if we lose that. So, uh, we're going to advocate the best that we can to keep that. Uh, taxes is scheduled to be committed next week, assesses on August 12th, nine o'clock. There's a meeting notice went out quite a while ago. So the plan is then to commit taxes next week and then the week after your tax bills would go out. The library fire department event is the Saturday, uh, that's actually 10:30 to noon. And the Sula days, uh, meeting is scheduled for August 17th at four thirty, getting down to the final countdown. A lot of last minute obstacles, short on food vendors. We're just hoping that everything's going to come together there, uh, for the later day, Sunday and Monday events. Second COVID vaccination clinic is scheduled for next week. And at the fire station, it's just going to be a five to six because most of the things are expecting follow ups. Uh, but they're still coming back. And then the bottom of the bridge, we had some, uh, ruined crude things being painted on the bottom of the bridge. So I sent the request to DOT about that. They're going to go down and paint it again with very little hope that it will not continue. Uh, but they're, they are going to take care of that. And then roadside mall, we've kind of heard through the grapevine that the state has cut a large portion of the roadside mall budget, um, on route two. Nothing happened at the end of the airport road, it's a corner road, it's all coming down. We're just working with the versary, I have to try to get it done. The building hasn't been touched, so we're pushing to have them come back in, all this money that they've got flowing around. Do roadside malls. It's, it's a safety issue from our perspective, so.
Can we do anything with like trail cams or something like that on the bridge and like put cameras up? So whoever's doing this stops like catch them like that. It's just, that's just like, it shouldn't be, that's one of the biggest things, like it's literally in our logo, like we don't need to have like weird words written on it or something.
That's not within our scope because we don't own it, we don't maintain it. And we're not law enforcement agencies. If DOT is going to be passionate about it, then they might install some sort of a.
What about at either end of it? So wait on like one of them.
It's actually underneath, it's underneath on the roadside, on the, every side side of the facility. Not the roadside, when you're on the, underneath, it's on the pipeline.
So if a landowner on either side down the bank said, cool, put these up there if you could aim things at them, right?
Definitely could, landowner. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, rather bust the people doing that, whether DOT cares or not, like it's not a big thing for them, but for us, but saying like.
Yeah, as long as the current graffiti was paid, I would be like, it's, it's special right now. So, yeah.
Yeah.
We're going to see how long it takes to come back. Uh, and then the last thing I had was I reached out to Christian Savage up at SEBC. That's the company that's working with the contractor to do our broadband feasibility study for the county. He was able to bounce back to me this afternoon and he's just reviewing the final version of the plan and I should have a copy of it before the end of the week. So that's moving right along and is a little bit ahead of schedule, uh, which is good. And then hopefully we'll have another window open up for, uh, broadband applications on the ground.
All right. Discussion action on July 21st, June 14th.
Fifteen.
Let's see there.
Our fifteen.
Someone concerned is great on whether it's fourteen or it'll be, take your pick.
I move that we approved our warrant number fifteen, reporting a thousand six hundred thirty dollars and thirty cents.
Motion to second, any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? All right. Discussion action on July 21st, airport warrant number seven, I presume. Let's see if we see something different there.
I think you're on the last meeting's agenda, so the last meeting's agenda.
Yeah. You're reading this. Yes, I am reading, saying I. There we go. Let's go to donations. How about that? Public comment, is everybody here for a comment? No, seeing none. We'll go to, uh, discussion action on donations.
Yep, you see seven hundred and fifty dollars since the last meeting, the benefits of Sula days. It's one hundred and fifty dollars each for the door bird, that's Old Mill Pub, Bangor Savings, Central Main Motors, Triple D Redemption and the High Family relationships.
Make a motion to.
Accept the donation.
Second.
Motion to second, uh, second to accept. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Everybody? All right, discussion action on speed table locations on Stanley Drive.
So at your request, I sent out a one pager to the residents, kind of folks are on Stanley Drive, including new ones on the other end. We're in touch with them as well. Uh, we received just one email back, uh, which is in your packet from Bruce Yen at 20 Stanley Drive. Who has no long-term concerns about it. Fox believes that it's, his concerns really is motorcycles and motorcycles. Uh, his other concern is the actual placement in the street. And then if we were to place it there, to make sure that there's not an area that those kind of vehicles could go around it on people's property. Uh, I also had Patty Wilden, uh, who said just generally that she supports the idea of the placement.
You want official motion on this?
If that's the one.
I mean, right. Which one, the party on that, I mean, the placement is at. You guys' discretion, I mean, you guys have put in the best plays, I mean, I can't think of this one off the top of my head on that.
Well, he said, uh, fire hydrant. Bruce suggested.
I don't know if the fire hydrant's right in front of this house or if it's farther down the street.
Do we already have the speed table or we have to file this?
No, this is the one that we're pulling up all the way up the street.
Okay.
Between two telephone poles near the fire. So then it would, yeah, prevent people from going up.
What around it?
Which is the issue that we're seeing it on Depot Street, they put barricades up around it. I honestly didn't go down and look, but.
See, I'll make a motion to approve the temporary placement of a speed table on Stanley Drive at a location that works the best, I would think. Motion to second, uh, any further discussion? All those in favor? Excellent. All right, uh, importance on the library trustees.
Uh, we have two vacancies on the library board right now. And we did receive an application from Gloria Nicholson. Her application is in, that was emailed to you last week. Yeah, it's been a consideration.
I make a motion to appoint Gloria Nicholson to the library board of trustees through town meeting 2022.
Motion to second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Uh, yeah, we'll jump back. Right, so we. Is that the, that is the second?
Yeah.
Back to Stanley's, you guys get to stand there, okay, we'll jump back. So we did, uh, Stanley Drive. It ended that it was going to land somewhere between the two telephone poles, close to the hydrant. Not exactly sure what that is. Let's shake up the.
I like the idea of it. I've seen it used on Depot Street and it only seems to slow traffic down for our new back, that one spot. You let us say we're going to put two in. For the house. But I've seen it used down there as a forward jump too. And we have a lot of traffic across that street, that stuff. That inserts me. They don't need anything more.
True. Yeah, you had a neighbor, uh, mentioned something, said we're, we're more than motorcycle track on that.
Yeah, I like the idea of, uh, I don't know that it's going to do what it's intended to do.
Right, we've got high hopes that it will help deter some of that, but you guys will be from people in the form of somehow the areas where it's working.
Did you guys hear back from anybody on Depot Street?
Uh, yeah, Depot Street is pretty good, so, uh, what we're doing is taking out the temporary ones from Depot Street, put it up there. Where the two permanent ones go into Depot Street, which is right up here. We're probably being later that weekend, okay? So when those go in, that will jump over and we'll use it there. If it works well as a temporary, we may consider, like you speak, the whole board, permanent ones. But the idea is to float it around and help determine, you know, hopefully get some new traffic off the side streets and come with the forwards, hopefully.
You think it really stops traffic?
It's a stop, it's a stop, the right direction.
If it doesn't work, we'll pull it.
Right, it is, it is separate, right? It's not a permanent thing, it's point time, we'll put it out, see how it works.
If it doesn't work, you pull it and then.
Well, it's, it's tough, right? I mean, it's traffic, uh, as you've seen, we've had a great, I, and I'm not sure why, uh, attendance of policemen in town recently from State Police to sheriffs, I mean, they've been heavy in town, I don't. It, it seems to be helping with Main Street, I don't. It, it's the way you do, right? I mean, we have a great presence right now and hopefully we keep it as far as your guys' side street over there. We'll have to see, but this is where they're sending that intersection down, I remember this, yeah, that is, right.
I wish they'd come up a little further and sit later.
Yeah, yeah.
Because it seems like they stay until seven.
Yeah, and it seems like those, yeah, complaints are right after.
Starts happening between eight and one.
Yeah.
So.
So I, I think they're listening, I feel there's a fair amount of calls going to them and they are right here, so hopefully it helps, I'm like writing it all in here. I don't want to drive forwards out of town, but right, I know it is, yeah.
And it's not all four wheelers for the most part, most of that are three step.
Okay. You guys have anything else? All right.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for coming in. And you'll have to, please let us know how, you know, if we put that round along, someone just like reach out.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
All right, we will come back in to move discussion action on, to the committee recommendation.
So the TIF committee met and they had preliminary discussions on the river enhancements, if you will. There was discussion about, um, swim area, which they're supportive of in the venture, not necessarily backing it with funding, uh, but they see value in the swimming area. So that application comes submitted, uh, to see if it's something that the state would approve in the location in the vicinity of the gazebo. Uh, the one thing that they did vote with a recommendation on, uh, was the purchase of cameras for downtown. And then amount of up to a thousand dollars.
Is that even close to correct? I feel like when we looked at cameras for a place, it was.
So that, right.
Something more expensive.
So the cameras for other places were elevated because they were going to be standalone units, they were going to be solar and solar.
Okay, so this has its own power source, so it's different.
This would be, yeah, Eric, I was talking about the warehouse as, you know, the base force, everything's inside, maybe the rail upgrade.
Oh, great.
It essentially located. Works almost.
Excellent. That is perfect.
So their recommendation is to prove up to a thousand for the purchase of that.
Good. Do they need anything from us on that or is that?
I assume that you would have to move to accept the recommendation.
I move that we accept the recommendation of the TIF committee for the purchase of cameras up to a thousand dollars.
Second.
So motion to second, any further discussion? Well, I mean, do we, I mean, do you feel that's adequate for what we need? Do we need to kick anything on our end? We know, is that adequate, are you?
I think that's going to.
That's going to, okay.
Do we have to put signs or should we put up signs like surveillance in there, maybe to deter some creepers and?
Technically you have to, but I think it has to be signed, so I think there will be all appropriate signage so that we are covered on that aspect.
Does that include the thousand dollars for the cameras? Like, I'm just thinking of like, we're going to want to put everything in at the same time, so we want to make sure that we've released enough funds to get the signage, all that stuff.
Let's move to thousand, okay. I think it'll, uh, for fail conference, it's going to be in the thousand, we'll remember on there.
This is a discussion, all those in favor? Excellent. All right. But we will move on from discussion action on investment services proposals. Okay, well, we have representatives of Bangor Savings, I can go up. Brett Miller and Mr. Shepherd.
Hi, nice to meet you.
So I'm virtual, yeah, I'm a phone, I'm a, I'm a, nice to meet you. On that, general board. Joe Hyatt.
Good luck.
Saul Berger.
Charlotte Kurtz.
Now, did you guys, uh, were you interested in hearing a presentation from us or were you more interested in asking us some questions about the proposal? Was there a particular area of interest that you wanted to dive into? Um, how would you guys, I mean, we can handle it however you'd like to.
Uh, I would suggest giving just a brief presentation as to what you might offer. First and rarely, we've just done banking, local institution, and not necessarily invested, so that's going to be new to us, so. Uh, some of the protections that you might offer, um, the actual maintenance themselves. And then if you could just briefly review your rate schedule and, you know, where you are, what your point of contact would be, frequently in contact with me a little more.
Sure, sure. Why don't we start with introductions?
I will, I am Julie Shepherd and my office is located in the Gaster and I've quite been clients in this area. I'm a relationship manager, A V P for Bangor Savings Day. Been with them for 70 years and I'm going to age myself, because I've been in banking for 30. So I know this community well, um, through my clients that I have and through being born and raised right here in Maine.
Brett Miller again, um, portfolio manager with Bangle Wealth Management. Been with the company a little over three years, but, uh, as you can tell from the hair, been in the business a long time. And actually, I, I grew up in Mercer, believe it or not, so, uh, went to high school in Scotty and, and, uh, went down in Boston and just kept working north and eventually I was back in this area, living in that, and here now. But, uh, as far as Bangor Wealth Management, um, we're, uh, I think a bit of a unique firm to this area. Uh, we're big enough to, you know, have some real economy scale, but we're still small enough to, uh, to be local and to make a lot of decisions internally, which we do, um, from a investment, uh, well, from a service perspective, I should probably say, the two of us really are your primary contacts for, um, for the relationship, for, for day-to-day routine money movement, uh, those types of activities. Any administrative issues, Julie would be your primary point of contact for any investment related issues, that would be your primary contact. So, um, between the two of us, we hope to cup cover the waterfront that way. As far as the firm itself, um, we're about a four billion dollar bank. In addition to that, we're also about four billion in assets, um, that we manage within the wealth management division. So, uh, our roots are as a trust company. We were, been around for about 30 years managing assets for individuals, nonprofits, institutions. And we actually do a lot of business with municipalities as well, probably hundreds of millions for sure, um, of the, of the, uh, four hundred, four billion that I mentioned. As far as our decision-making process goes, internal operations when it comes to investments, uh, it's a committee-based approach. So there are six or seven portfolio managers that, that work together to come up with our policy, whether that's looking at bond investments or stock investments or some combination of the two. We are somewhat agnostic, I would say, in terms of how we approach a, a client and their investment needs. So whether it's some looking for something that's very, very conservative, um, which is, is challenging in the current industry environment or something that is, you know, growth oriented or aggressive, uh, we can fill any of those mandates and anything in between. So we really do work to understand where is your trying to accomplish and, and deliver that in the most cost-effective, uh, fashion. So, uh, I, I, I garnered from reading your one of the main reports that you have been investing CDs and your rates have gone down, of course, like everybody else's has. So it's been challenging, as I mentioned earlier, short-term investment fund, but, uh, are you folks looking for, um, some combination? I'm assuming of longer-term assets that you'd like to invest as well as perhaps some shorter-term operating assets to accurate.
I mean, I would say fair, yeah. Honestly, the. Says there. And we were diligent to not have to get into it. So, uh, residual fees received of the host program, just like this, you know, pooled money would be. We take money from that on revenue side and then the money continues to last, so we don't spend. So this is not typically an outflow. We've never, as far as I know, just into our overflow of host fees. Beyond what you're bringing in annual revenues, so. Well, the last 15 to 20 years, host fees have generated, say, three hundred to now six hundred thousand, this year could be close to eight hundred thousand. Okay. And we use, say, six fifty to offset taxation, so there's another 200,000 dollars, which is offset. And those fees will continue to increase based on the agreement that we have, so, um, unless there's a big project, there's not going to be a sort of a short-term lead there, okay? I mean, that could change based on, that could change yearly based on.
Yeah.
Look at this board, I mean.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, somebody like a shit, I don't want to say we want a million bucks to build a building and.
Cool, yeah. So it needs to be what, like accessibility without, you know, high rate of, you know, penalty for doing so.
Yeah.
You know, it's not like, you know, personal money moving aside, we can write it up, it's the town's money. So if something happens, we need to be able to access it without having the, you know, that fear of, whoa, we just lost a ton of money, easy to access that, so.
That's true.
That would be something that'd be important for me, just to know that we need that money to get it without.
Yeah.
Um, well, as, as you probably are aware, as far as the main statute goes, there's really kind of two sets of guidelines. There's a set of guidelines, if you direct investments yourself, that's a somewhat more limited, um, menu option that you can, can't buy. Um, and then if you delegate to an investment manager and there's a, you know, certain criteria on that, um, then the prudent investor rule applies. And all that is, is saying, um, you know, you have to take a look at the purpose of the funds, um, your liquidity needs, your time horizon, your accounts for risks, economic conditions, and then invest it like a prudent investor would. So, uh, those are all things we're familiar with and, and, you know, typically when we're talking with most municipalities, they, they tend to err inside of being more conservative and not for obvious reasons. But, uh, if it's a, if it's a type of a fund where you have a perpetual time horizon, oftentimes they'll just say, here, take these funds, go ahead and invest them, uh, in more of a growth orientation, you know, more stock exposure. Uh, and then we, you know, we report that periodically. And then with those funds that are somewhat along the lines of what Richard was describing, you know, you might take a more conservative approach where you've got more of a fixed income, if not a completely fixed income type of portfolio, to protect the assets from volatility that you might get in stock markets. So that's kind of how we, we approach those two different buckets, if you would. Um, and again, you know, we would work with you to nail down exactly what those specifics look like. If there were potential liabilities, you know, what's the time horizon on it, so you can match up the investments appropriately. Or if there was a, you know, piece of the assets that was a cemetery trust fund, for instance, you know, that might be.
Is there, you see mostly municipalities trending as far as, I mean, if you deal with so many, you find that it's hot, hot for everybody or most, everybody does the same thing?
I find that, uh, it's, it really is, I think with the bigger municipalities, where there's more dollars involved, they tend to get a little more sophisticated in some of their approaches. I find that it's, it really is, I think, with the bigger municipalities where there's more dollars involved, they tend to get a little more sophisticated in some of their approaches and perhaps have a little more equity exposure. But some of the more rural municipalities, the dollar amounts are smaller, they tend to be more conservative. That's just my observation. But there really is no reason to necessarily handcuff yourself to a short-term fixed income. You know, if you have a liability that's five years out, for instance, you know, I mean, you can kind of, kind of keep that out. Another thing that's important is, you know, looking at, I mean, talk about that prudent investor rule, getting back to modern portfolio theory where, you know, oftentimes it does make sense and you can take less risk by investing a small portion in stocks and the majority of the portfolio in bonds. Your overall volatility is lower than if you just had 100% bond portfolio, and your return is higher. And, you know, that's, it's the only free lunch in investments, really, where you get that diversification level. Now, again, you have to have a certain time horizon. You don't want to do that for six-month type of money, but if you do something that's three, four, five years out, or something that, you know, you don't think you're going to need, and you just want to earn a higher rate of return. It might make some sense to have a small allocation to equity. But again, we tend to let the client drive that decision, you know, we'll inform you and give you our opinion, but ultimately, none of your funds will want you to come.
What's the frequency with which you're actually actively looking at our specific investments? Is it, you know, every single week you're looking at the offers that we have? Is it like on a, you know, per period? Is it in a quarter? So like, you know, how long will it be before you're like, oh, my goodness, something really took a left and we thought that was going to take a right? What's the timeframe on riding the ship again before it's like?
Yeah, no, that's a good, good question. Typically, when we're talking, our investment community meets every week. We just met today, as a matter of fact. And when we do that, we're reviewing policy, you know, for all accounts. So we'll be talking about want to make changes in a fixed income portfolio, for instance, and how that might impact your account. And if we decide to execute a transaction, do that across all accounts would make sense. So in that sense, we're looking at our strategy every week on a regular basis. But we may not make any changes, you know, depending on the account. Fixed income, for instance, we don't tend to make dramatic changes, tends to be thoroughly steady. But, you know, it might be a couple times a year, we make a dramatic change. Reinvesting bonds, you know, that'd be more routine type of activity. If you did have a stock allocation, that would be a little more active in terms of perhaps cutting back in times like this where the stock market is going up and up. Now, oftentimes we're balancing selling stocks to put some of those profits back on the bond side and keep the account in balance with whatever targets were, that kind of thing. So, you know, cash needs another thing. If there's a, you know, a cash inflow or a flow portfolio, that'll pop up on our computer screens and address that. So there's a lot of little touches. They're not necessarily, you know, big shifts necessarily, but we're monitoring accounts on a very regular basis. So that answers the question.
It does. What kind of client-like interactiveness is there? Was like, there's something where maybe you're looking at something and you guys have that feeling that if we just ride it out, this is going to be a good investment. But again, the same sense, like, if it looks like things are going down, is there any sort of communication with the customer? Like, we think this is a good idea, but this is a big chunk of money, and there is a large risk with this. We're gonna, do you want to let it ride or not? Like, do we have a type of interactive, like, relationship or no?
Well, you can. We are a discretionary asset manager, I E. Well, what that means is you give us our marching orders, we manage the money, and we pour back to you periodically. So if there's a transaction that makes sense in the portfolio, and it's in the context of your investment policy statement, we'll just do it, because that's what you're paying us to do. If there was something that was really out of the ordinary, something unusual, you know, like the bear market that we had in March and April of last year, you know, we might be in touch if you were 100% that we fully would say, you know, this is our thinking. Now, you know, say of course, that kind of thing. But it depends a little bit on how we set up the relationship at the onset and what your interests are and preferences. So we can be as hands-on or as hands-off as you'd like us to be. Most of our clients prefer the hands-off approach because they're paying us to do that stuff.
As Brett mentioned last bear market, which was early 2020, I was actually reaching out to my clients, which you would be one of them, and just saying, what are your thoughts? Is there anything that's kind of bubbled up? Do you have any questions or anything? So we do reach out. That's more from a relationship management piece. But you do have mentioned about touching that contact is we like to get together face-to-face a minimum of once per year to answer, to do exactly what we're doing right now, which is to answer any questions, to review the last year. But I'm available all the time. Then you can reach out, call. If there's any questions, concerns, you receive monthly statements. If that statement is received, you take a look at it. You have any concerns, I'm there to answer those questions. Our contact information is on those. And also, if there's any sub-accounting that needs to be done, we offer that. We can do that as well. And that's a monthly contact and reach out.
Okay.
So we're always available.
Alright. You know, for me, like, if it's like once a quarter, it's like, basically, no, because it's very complicated. It's something that has why people pay to do it. So we could look at it and be like, oh, maybe a bunch of numbers. Like, red ones make me nervous. But like, like, once a quarter, there was some sort of really kind of go through, okay, this is where things are growing. We move things around here, just kind of dumb it down. So we kind of know where things are. I think for me, that would make me like, at least feel like I knew what was going on with stuff.
Yeah, and initially, I think, especially when you're transitioning from, you know, a bank investment environment to a full investment environment, you know, there needs to be a little more communication just to understand, you know, how it's been, what's been implemented and what we're doing. So early on, there tends to be more, you know, interaction than just anything.
I can't think of anything else except for, I mean, what sets you guys apart? I mean, why are you better, you know, you have a better return, so you just better at your job. I mean, you seem nice.
A lot of it is Bank of States Bank as a whole. We are privileged to be a part of that, where the bank's been around 168 years, Maine-based, Maine community. We have a tremendous amount of volunteer time. We have a little over 1,000 employees right now. And last year, we volunteered 13,500 hours within the community. Also, we have a foundation that donated 2.5 million dollars into the community, into nonprofits. I have the pleasure of being able to deliver some of those checks to the nonprofits that I am deeply connected with and enjoy. I was the president of the board of directors for the Children's Center in Augusta, very involved with the children, the main children's hopeful, the Wanderers of Waterville. So the bank as a whole and its culture is Maine-based with us as that most people out there in the community, Maine people working for Bank of States Bank.
Yeah, the culture is pretty huge at Bank of States Bank, and a lot of, a lot of corporations talk about that and just talk. But I worked for a lot of other banks in my career. I've only been with Bank of States for a short period of time, and it really is different. They take it seriously. I think it shows the way they treat their employees so that employees will in turn treat their clients in a similar fashion. It's a great organization. And, you know, Julie mentioned the dollars that you commit back to the community. We are a mutual bank as opposed to a stock-based bank, so we don't have shareholders in the traditional sense. We have, our shareholders really are the customers in the community. And the bank feels that, you know, by using the foundation and paying back in the community, that's in a sense a good end in sorts. But beyond the culture, I think, from an investment perspective, anybody that you talk to is going to be able to buy all the same products that we can, we can buy for you. And we don't sell anything. That's not what we do. We buy a service, and we have access to really whatever investment option that makes the most sense for you folks. In addition to that, we have quite a bit of experience, again, as I mentioned, in this area. We don't have any proprietary products. Everything we do is developed internally with our team based in Bank of States Portland, and just recently we hired a new portfolio manager in Concord, New Hampshire. So between just the investment group, we have over 125 years of experience. There's three other classes on the team that have a similar, I've mentioned myself. So, you know, again, I think what sets us apart is that depth of expertise, the size of the institution and resources that we can bring to bear. And again, the culture piece that.
This is different. Regulations as far as public money.
There is, yeah. So the municipal statute, Maine, has some very specific statutes around how you can invest money in municipalities, I mentioned a little bit. So if you're just self-directing, you're limited to some very safe and secure types of investments, F D S C insured, U S government bonds, for instance. But if you, if you delegate that investment authority to a professional money manager like our team, we can go out and build a portfolio that's based on a more modern portfolio theory type of approach. So taking into account risk and return, time horizon, and the purpose of the funds to find the best solution for you. And oftentimes, that will end up giving you the potential to earn higher rates of return than what you can get on safe guaranteed investments. The challenge, as you all know right now with the short-term investments, is that, you know, rates are practically nil. And we don't, you know, we don't have any magic wand to make that better on our side of the table. Really is a question of can we take the assets that you have and invest in a way that makes sense with the level of risk comfortable with to try to generate more return? And to that point, I'll just tag on, you mentioned rates, Richard. The fee we're proposing is around $14,000. That works out to, I used to put 4 million, about 0.61% rate in terms of, as an annual fee and in terms of assets and management. I will say, though, if you did decide you wanted to go with a purely bond approach, so this is based on a balanced portfolio, so using both stocks and bonds. A bond portfolio would start at a 0.5% and on the first million, you go to 0.35 on the next million. So I throw that out simply because if you do decide to go purely bonds, you'd be able to lose money. But honestly, you're probably going to earn less money in terms of the return sheet.
I wonder, I'm not sure what your ability is to do this, you know. Is there a way where you do something with municipal clients that, blocking, you know, the specifics of what town it is, that you could kind of give us, you know, all right, in 2020, we have a municipality that gave us $2 million. They were on a scale of 1 to 10, 10 being most risky, 1 being safest, they were about a 3. This was the rate of return they had. Can we kind of see what you've been able to?
Yeah.
Make for.
Yeah, I did, I did actually put some of that information in the proposal. And it's, it's, you know, it's a little bit generic in terms of the return, but I can just tell you, this was, this was as I think May. So it was on page five, but now. If you, I'll just, I'll just tell you, I'll just tell you what the numbers were. So since inception for this particular set of accounts, these are all accounts managed towards a balanced objective. So that would be probably 50% stock, 50% bonds. Probably, I'm guessing, a little more aggressive than you guys might go, but maybe not. And then the average annual rate of return for that portfolio from 2003 to present is 6.65%. So pretty, pretty strong numbers. If you look at it over the last year, it was actually 21% the last 12 months. Now, it's a little bit exaggerated because from May to May, you're capturing all of the rally in the stock market and on the downline. So don't expect that number to happen again in the next 12 months. But if you look at the last three, five, and 10 years, three-year average was almost 9%. The five-year average was 8.5%. And the 10-year average is almost 7% for, for, again, for those balanced portfolios. So, you know, I, if you were looking at a portfolio that's maybe 20% fixed income and 20% equity, which would be more in keeping with a very conservative approach, you know, you might be looking at expected returns somewhere in the 4% to 5% range. And that's probably about what those portfolios did historically on something much more conservative. So then these are actual client performance.
I don't know if you have kind of a silo operation in terms of the regular bank versus, well. Would anything change if your proposal, if you were to take all of our account?
We remove our regular banking to Bank of States. Mass and that's how I did it, right?
Sure.
What would that do for us or nothing?
I'm fairly confident that we could revisit the fee proposal, just in terms of looking at the whole thing, because this was only based on just that one piece. Obviously, we'd have to talk to some of my banking counterparts, but we do work pretty closely with our banking counterparts. And to that end, if there was a portion of these funds that you felt need to be F D I C insured, we'd be happy to work with our partners to accomplish that. Good question.
Anybody else?
Actually, if I had a question, I would.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Appreciate it. I was kidding. We've got two more firms coming through tonight. It's not safer.
Okay.
No, probably not making a decision tonight. We don't like to sleep on things. So yeah, two weeks from today, we'll be back again, and then maybe that point in time, we'll be able to follow up with you again or.
Great. I'll leave some business cards, but you probably have a big staff in the evening. Nice to meet you all. Thank you very much.
Brett's going to walk out. But I could do the same thing if you have any questions between Adam and or something else. In your other discussions, please don't hesitate to give either one of us a call, and I greatly appreciate it.
That's great. Thank you.
We'll be here and have a wonderful evening. Nice to meet all of you.
Thank you. So. And then next.
Don't catch her. But I didn't get any more.
Hard to come by, so you want to make sure you don't forget that dent supply. Well, I made my kids like months ago. It's usually December. And they were like eight months out. My kids, they're kids. They might fall out before their first six.
Almost two months.
Same on or off?
Okay.
Try to get into a dentist, folks.
So I think our next one, which is seven o'clock, is on the way in. The next one is going to be Amos from K S P, kind of X savings. He's going to have somebody swoon in.
You said there was one more after that?
Sure, it's well. Moving on to that.
Where they at?
One of them. We can't, their fees are a little high, but they have strong, from local references.
Entertaining.
It's such a negotiation, right? You have a probably good night. So we would leave a sleep account here, and that's a certain threshold that automatically moves to death bank. So you can set a threshold. I think it's usually like 300,000. Once our technical account is over here, we get the deposit account in 300,000, automatic transfers electronically.
I'll get to the.
Pretty much.
So we don't?
That's not going to work.
Right.
Walk to a bank here.
Right. Because that's what we did in TD Bank. We had TD Bank, so we walked across the deposit. It's also just a sleep.
How is things? Does that have like investment, like management?
And are you, are you ready for number two? Where would you like me to sit?
You sit right in front of you.
When you come in, you're supposed to say you're ready for number one. My bad. How's everybody doing? Excellent. Thanks for having me, I should say. I do have one other person calling in.
Okay.
On Zoom. So I don't know if that's, I told him to go ahead. Yep, William Gatt.
Should we allow him to talk?
That is up to you. Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. No.
I'm here.
You look awfully formal with your tie.
Well, you know, I got a lot of Zoom calls today, so.
Okay. So like, I guess we're good when you're ready to go. I don't know if you want to do an introduction, or I don't want to steal anyone's thunder.
I'm Rachel Bell, the time manager.
Hi, Richard. Amos Fire, kind of X savings.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Jim Lyman.
Jim, nice to meet you. Lindsay, nice to meet you. Nice to meet you. Nice to meet you. Am I on? Right. So I'm Amos Fire. I work at Kennebec Savings Bank. I don't know how familiar you are with Kennebec Savings Bank, but I'll give you a brief overview of the bank. Go over a couple of things and we can open it up to some questions. Does that sound reasonable? Okay. Well, Bill Gettney, who is on the trust team, if you chose Kennebec Savings Bank to manage your long-term assets. Bill Gettney, who works at FCI Advisors, would be on the team. Also on the team, but not here because she's on vacation, is Gail Conley. And Gail is our regional vice president at Kennebec Savings Bank. She would be overseeing the account with me. We like a team concept. Kennebec Savings Bank, we've been around for a while, 151 years. We were incorporated back in 1850 as a mutual savings bank. And what that means is we don't have any shareholders. We're owned by our depositors. Our headquarters is in Augusta, which is, that's where my office is. But we do have five branches, including. Hi, join us?
I was just looking.
I want to make sure you hear it on the report. In case you're taking the minutes, right? We got to get those in. Our closest branch to all is in, is in Waterhole. So we're fairly, fairly local. The trust department, I have been overseeing the trust department. I actually helped start the trust department about 21 years ago. We literally had zero accounts and zero assets under management. And if you fast forward to June of this year, we have about 243 million now in assets under management. So we've seen some tremendous growth and most of those accounts are main people in organizations such as yourself. In the non-for-profit municipality side of the business, we have about 53 relationships, about 67 million in assets under management. And those accounts range in size from 150,000 up to over 10 million with an average account size of about a million. So the 2.3 million you put in the proposal, if we were to manage that, that would be a very good sized account for us. Any questions on history of the bank or the bio? All right. I've got a couple of quick things in the cover and we can open up Q and A. I've been doing this now for 26 years. Been meeting with municipalities and non-for-profits. And really what it comes down to is performance. When you, when you look at all the banks or the advisors you're talking to, performance is going to be pretty close across the board. So really your decisions come down to fees and are you comfortable with the people that are servicing your account? And our fees, I'd like to say are pretty competitive. If you've looked in the RFP, we charge 56 basis points, which is a 25% discount of our published fee schedule. What does that mean in dollar terms? So it would be slightly less than fourteen thousand dollars a year. So very competitive. Bill Gettney, who works for FCI Advisors, this is a very important piece too, because their fee is part of our fee. So there's no additional fee beyond the 56 basis points. But what FCI Advisors does, we formed a partnership with them back in 2012 to provide investment management services for the bank and our trust clients. And they've done a phenomenal job. We really, really helped us grow our business over the years. And they have, they, they manage about, boy, Bill, what do you have now? Nine, nine billion assets?
Thirteen point, thirteen point six.
Yeah, you've had some tremendous growth. And they specialize, they're a registered investment advisor regulated by the SEC. And they specialize in providing asset management to community bank trust departments like Kennebec Savings Bank. We're the only bank in Maine that utilizes FCI advisors. So they're our partner. And we've done a great job. And really what our model is, is you would have Kennebec Savings Bank as your local advisor. I would be your primary contact and your primary advisor. My job is to devote all my time, make sure your needs and services, your needs and goals are being met. And then we're backed by FCI's world-class investment capabilities. So it's a really good one-two punch of local service backed by some really good investment folks. But I would be your primary contact person on the relationship. We talked about fees, service, you know, it comes down to service and I'm sure you're talking with other local banks. We're pretty low. We're not too far away. It was a 40 minute drive for me to get here from Hollywood this evening. We're here when you need us to be here. You call me up and if you need us here in a couple of days, a short notice for a meeting, then we can be here. Some of my non-for-profits and municipalities meet four times a year. And there are others, once they get comfortable, one, one meeting a year is plenty. So we're here as much as you need us to be here. Other than that, day-to-day, phone call, email, fax, whatever it might be, if we're working with Richard or one of the office staff. Superior service, you know, we've been around for 151 years. I'd like to think we're doing something right on the banking side as well as the trust side. So our job is to try to exceed expectations for our customers. And I think what we bring, which might be unique from some of the other banks you're talking to, is you're getting two fiduciaries for the price of one. And a fiduciary, you've got Kennebec Savings Bank as well as FCI Advisors, our partner, who are overseeing the management of your account for no additional cost. So there's some really good oversight there. And I think that's an important piece. And then on top of that, you know, we all offer probably the same services as far as money management goes. But above and beyond that, we're very dedicated to helping our clients, if you need to develop an investment policy statement. I've taken a peek, you had one on your website. I think it's structured more for like a cash management type of account. And I know you're looking to invest in longer-term funds. Is that correct? So we could help you not only draft, we could actually write a template for you to use, which would be made more appropriate for funds that are going to be used for long-term. That's something that we do at no extra cost. And I'll tell you, putting myself in your shoes, the last thing you want to do is write a policy statement, right? You all have your own jobs. It's a lot to do. So we really try to help as much as we can in the process. And then we do sub-accounting. So I know you have a couple of accounts and you might want statements to look a certain way. We can customize statements, sub-accounting, anything that you require, we can do. I'd like to say over my 26 years, I've seen it all. Maybe I haven't, but I think there's a good chance we could, we could put something together that meets your needs if you need sub-accounting. So that's kind of my 10,000 foot level luck at our bank and what we do. I wanted there to be plenty of time for you to all ask questions of Bill and myself. Bill, did I miss anything?
No, I don't think so, Amos, but while we're not 150 years old, we are in the top, in the top 20 of RIAs in the country. And we are 56 years old. So we've been around for quite a while also.
Excellent. And I didn't even have to look at my cheat sheet for that whole time. I think I got it. All right. So questions for, for me or for Doug?
Oh, well, it was off the top of my head. Because you have a fiduciary setting it with you. Are your returns averaging better than everyone else? Or where do you land at that?
Yeah, and I'll let Bill get into a little bit of the details. I'd like to say our goal with the proposal that we put together for you, type of portfolio, we're looking for market-like returns during the good years, but having some more risk controls in place during the not-so-good years. So maybe you beat the market in down years. But anybody that's telling you that over the long-term, they can beat the market with major benchmarks. Yeah, I, I have a hard time. It's hard to beat the market over time. So Bill, anything to add as far as goals on performance?
If you went through the RFP, we, there's a piece in there, which is a pro forma, which, which actually has our current. With the historical returns for our individual fixed income part of the portfolio, our equity part of the portfolio. And you can see there are some comparisons to benchmark and we are running ahead. We run 11 different styles of investment, four that are equity. And of the 11, 10 of our portfolio composites are ahead of their benchmarks. But as Amos said, what we're really doing is looking for diversified portfolios with risk control and make our asset allocation changes, basically tweaks to take money out of overvalued places and put money into undervalued places. So what we put together for a proposal for you uses our core equity style for individual stocks, which is a blend of value and growth. And it's done quite well last year. It, you know, it beat the S and P by 4%, but I wouldn't say that it would do that all the time. We're, we're, we'd be happy to be right in the risk control and be close to it. And then hopefully our asset allocation where 85 to 90% of returns come from will help us beat the blended benchmarks that we're trying to, we're trying to run ahead. And we've been doing pretty well with that. But we, our, our idea is to get good returns at a reduced risk level. So that's the, the, the process that we use. And since you've never done long-term investing, but you know, you've had all your money in the short-term end. We proposed a 60-40 split equities to fix, which we thought was good enough to get the growth and do well, but not putting you out at 75-25 and being more aggressive considering it was a new process for the town.
Yeah. And I would just add, we did come in with a little bit more of a conservative objective than maybe some of the other towns and municipalities that we manage might, or only because if this is your first kind of experience in stocks and bonds and mutual funds, we didn't want to be overly aggressive to start. So it would be a relatively conservative looking portfolio to start. Again, that can be tweaked based on, on what your needs objectives are over time. Does that answer your question? It does. Okay. Okay. It's a tough question. Anytime you bring up performance, it's, there's no short answer to that.
But yeah, and, and there are composites in the RFP that you can see our performance. There is a core equity and a fixed income composite in the RFP. So you.
The numbers are there if you want to.
The numbers are there over the last 10 years, so.
Yeah. And one thing I forgot to mention, and this is somewhat related to your question is, you know, I want you to know how important is how we monitor these portfolios on a day-to-day basis. You may look at me, I'm one person, one advisor, but through FCI, we have a team of 30 investment professionals on the team that are overlooking the portfolio. And these are folks that have experience, specialists in stocks, bonds, mutual funds, and research and asset allocation. So we have, through FCI, we have a tremendous amount of resources and talent overseeing the investment process. My job is to make sure that that portfolio is being built exactly to meet your needs. And we can customize, these aren't cookie cutter portfolios. We customize these portfolios to meet your needs. You may have, on your finance committee, you may have a strong feeling towards keeping out a certain type of company or industry in your portfolio. If that's the case, and you felt strongly about that, we can remove those types of names from the portfolio. You know, tobacco or energy or something like that, for example. So it's very important customization. That's what we do to try to meet your needs.
To, to back up a minute and compare what we do, we have 62 people in the company. And as Amos said, we are investment professionals, but we actually have 23 portfolio managers. So, you know, we're, then they're all broken into small teams to add excellence in their input. But if, you know, one person happens to leave, it doesn't throw a monkey wrench into the process. 16 of our portfolio managers are chartered financial analysts. And we have something like, I think, 18 MBAs in finance spread across the investment management thing group. And we download every day from Kennebec's trust accounting system. So we see everything that happens in the account on a daily basis. It's not like we look at these portfolios like once a month or something. We are online and seeing them every day. Deposits, withdrawals, and any stock recommendations that we send to Kennebec as an approval, then he, Amos gets back to us and tells us whether it's okay to go ahead or not. So for instance, we just recently sold AT&amp;T. As you probably noticed, they're getting out of their media business. And they are basically a large debt company without much growth going forward. And we replaced that with Honeywell, which is doing quite well in the industrial space. So those recommendations came out to Amos about two weeks ago. And all he has to do is say, yeah, I agree, or for some reason the client loved AT&amp;T, used to work for him, never wants to sell it. But those, those things are how the process works. So we, we have a, a number of teams dedicated to excellence. And you know, there's a core equity team, this is a core portfolio. There's a fixed income team, there's a research team that follows all of the research pieces we get from all, all of the sources that we use in making our macro decisions. There's an asset allocation team and so forth. So there's just a lot of infrastructure behind what we bring to Kennebec to make it, you know, the best of local service and really good institutional investment management. So that's the, that's the, the game plan that we have.
Yeah, we provided you in the proposal, a sample portfolio. So you could take a look at just some of the names that we would recommend buying as of today. And these are, you know, blue chip stocks, high-quality bonds, low-cost mutual funds. A lot of these names of these companies that we recognize, Pepsi, Exxon, Colgate, Pfizer, just to name a few. But that's what we do is individual stocks and individual bonds. Use some mutual funds to diversify some of the other areas, like small companies and mid-sized companies. Sorry.
You said these advisors. Has the advisor been with your company for a long time or the, do they rotate in and out or?
Our.
Yeah, you, yeah.
Our, our company, all of our, all of our people are part of FCI. So we have, you know, 16 portfolio managers. They're, they're all, we don't, when we use, when I say we use, you know, outside mutual funds, we vet them and have regular meetings with those people. But the individual equity, the fixed income, the asset allocation, that's all internal to FCI. And, and we've been together for, you know, the company is 56 years old. Our youngest employees are probably in their 30s and our oldest are in their 80s.
Yeah, Bill, and I think, to answer your question, I think the average tenure at FCI is about 20 years. So there's not, there's not a lot of changeover. It's, you know, we've got some continuity built in. In fact, when, since I've been, since Kennebec Savings Bank has been partnered with FCI since 2012, I haven't seen any turnover on my end of the folks that I deal with. Bill's been there with me since day one. So we've had a real good partnership. That's a great question.
What's the average client load per advisor? So does each advisor, you have 16 of them, do they have 100 accounts that they're trying to look at every single day? Do they have 20? I mean, how many people are they trying to make sure don't lose their accounts or?
No, that's excellent. Let me answer that.
Managers are broken up into teams. So each portfolio team for core equity, for value equity, for select growth or equity income is comprised of at least two CFAs and a couple of people. They do not, they, they manage the portfolio, what they would like it to be in an ideal situation, if it was all cash. Some of them do have clients of their own, but they don't touch any of the bank clients. Those are run by, by a different group. We have, they create alpha in the portfolios and the asset allocation team creates alpha. And then in my group, we have five portfolio administrators who look at the accounts every day and review the accounts and implement the changes that the core equity team might make. So we've got a structure built in where we can really, you know, if, if the core team decided to sell telephone, it would probably be done within two or three days across all of the discretionary, all of the accounts that we deal with that had telephone. So that's a regular process.
And let me jump in and let me answer that question from the local level at Kennebec Savings Bank, because I would be your local advisor. We have about 400 relationships. We have three local advisors, myself being one. So I'm responsible for about 125 relationships. And I meet with just about every single one of my relationships on an annual basis. So that's doable. And when we get to the point where we have too many accounts for just three advisors, we'll bring somebody in. But having the help of FCI behind the scenes managing the portfolios really frees up a lot of time for us to be able to come out and do things like this all the time. You know, that's my job is, is to be with the clients and make sure, you know, we're doing what we need to be doing.
So you're at 125 now. What's that threshold where you say this is too many? Is it, you get to 135, 150? I mean, how many?
Yeah, that's a great question.
Two eyeballs, 125, I think there are a lot of things to watch, but.
I would say when I get to, but when, when advisor, I've been doing it for about 26 years. So I have a little bit more experience and I've kind of streamlined the process a little bit. I can be a little more efficient. 150 is probably a, is probably a number that once I get over that, that would be too much. And you'd have to bring someone again. What I tend to do is my, kind of my specialty is non-for-profit world and municipalities. So that's really been a kind of my focus on going forward. So I've been carving out some of my business that I've had for a while and giving that to another advisor so I can focus on the towns. And there's a huge need for towns, municipalities, and non-for-profits to have their investments managed and have a lot of experience doing that. So does that answer your question? So 125, 150 would probably be a max for me. Another advisor might be able to do, you know, 150 as well of the, of the 200, that's an advisor. But we're, we're, we're staffed to meet the needs right now. Absolutely. Great question.
You're good. Right. Just keep buttery smooth. I don't even know.
You answered everything. Does anybody else have anything?
I hope I was sincere. Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you. I appreciate that. I've done, I've done a lot of these over the years. And I put myself, I've actually been in your shoes, you know, for a non-for-profit, sitting down and seeing an advisor. So I, you know, I try to put myself in your shoes, what kind of questions you might have and what, you know, how to make this, this can be complicated. We try to simplify as much as we can. That's our job. You, you're paying us to take care of the day-to-day decisions and report to you on an annual or quarterly basis. I don't think you want to be involved, right, in the, the day-to-day trading or changes like that. Can I ask you guys a question? You have two accounts, I believe, right, that totaled a two-point-three million. Would those accounts be one account or would you want them segregated into two? What we could do is one account, we could do sub-accounting for you. So for investment-wise, we could manage one account, but we could break it out into two for accounting purposes. I don't know if you, have you put thought into that and what direction you want to go? I'm just curious.
I think it's early at this point, even.
You know, because we could go either direction. I guess what we could manage it as, as two, or we can manage it as one with sub-account.
I, I think it would have a lot to do with revenues, both on our side and what you guys are able to earn for us. It is two. Because they are two separate accounts, one doesn't really grow, doesn't get additional add beyond what we're earning. And one does. And so that would really, at that point in time, be the, we wanted to keep track of that.
You know, and you brought up a good point. I, I should throw this out there. The question come up is, what would our, what would you expect for rate of return over the long term? Again, this is money that you have earmarked for longer term, right? This is getting away from your, your short-term cash. And when you start looking out over five or ten years, a couple of business cycles, the portfolio that we're recommending, which is relatively conservative, would be somewhere in the neighborhood of seventy percent would be the return. And that, again, that's taking your conservative approach, trying to be diversified, not taking on too much risk. You compare that to a CD at one percent, you can see, right, over the long term. But you're going to have fluctuations along the way. That market doesn't go. Separate a sixty, forty mix that we're recommending over a long period of time, yes. But you could have years, like during the pandemic, we lost forty percent in five weeks. But by the end of the year, we made it all back and we were, we were ahead. So you have, you know, out of a ten-year period, you could expect probably seven to eight good years. And then you're going to have two years where there's maybe a recession in a, in a market that's not doing so well. But you just have to remember, to keep that longer-term focus, you'll have a solid return over time.
Are you the point person for Kennedix, one through KVCC and Whitefield? Are those all your clients?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So if you, they, they're great. So we, Tana Winthorpe, Tana Whitefield at KVCC. Yes, I oversee those accounts and they're the references we've supplied.
I just want to make sure they were yours and not somebody else's. Just a firm reference.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
So that can be fees, you see the first seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand is one percent. What is the, like, the average of that going to be?
Fifty-six basis points, which is point five-six. So about a half of a percent. And again, that includes FCI's fee too, that's built into that. So there's nothing on top of that. And that's for active management. You may have somebody that comes in and gives you a lower fee, but they're, they want to do index funds. We're active managers. So we're, we're picking our stocks, we're picking our mutual funds. You know, we're trying to batch the market during the good years, but provide some, some risk controls for when the market doesn't do so well. So it's a pretty, our normal fee schedule is one percent. So you're getting about half of that.
And that, that includes the twenty-five percent discount that you, the fifty-six, the twenty-five percent discount off the fee schedule for charitable pricing, that's down to fifty-seven.
It comes out to about, the average fee is fifty-six, point five-six basis points. It never makes any sense. Point five-six.
So you're saying that model basically allows you to pivot when there's, when there is volatility or you see something, you know, because you have like the ability to quickly turn on the heel, like, oh crap, that, that plant caught on fire, like, we need to get people's money now. Or is it, you know, or it's some other entity that's on the TV and some other state, we don't know, they're looking at it like, yeah, you're a clever person. Like, what's the ability to?
So, yes, we're small enough where we can be nimble and quick. So we can, we can make changes in a relatively short amount of time. But I would be lying to you to tell you that, you know, we can outthink the market and, okay, we're getting out today because we see pain ahead. We don't do that. We buy good, quality companies and we invest for the long term. There are going to be times where some of those companies that we choose underperform. There's a management change. You know, something's gone on with their profit and revenue. We're getting like Hess Energy, we just sold that. We took some profit. We said, you know what, we can redeploy our profits and to go to something that we think has better long-term perspectives. But to get out of equities altogether and try to time the market, that's just not what we do. You know, our promise to you is we might reduce our exposure to stocks from sixty percent to fifty percent because we think times might be a little bit tougher. But we're not going to get out of stocks altogether and try to time the market at all. But individual companies, yeah, we, we.
And let me, let me, let me address the Hess question. Because we didn't sell it because there was anything wrong with the company. We just made a boatload of money in it. And it has, it is one of the highest beta oil stocks in the market, which it, it almost moves twice as much as the average oil stock like Exxon and, and Chevron. So it's very levered. And we just decided we did so well that we wanted to take some risk out of the portfolio. But in answer to your question, if you go back to two thousand and, say, twelve or thirteen, when Carnival Cruise in the Mediterranean in Greece hit the rock, we owned Carnival in one of our portfolio styles. We sold every share of that stock that day because we didn't know if the oil tanks would hold and what would happen and what would the environmental implications of keeping in that stock. And there were more than enough choices to find something comparable to replace. So we sent instructions to all of our banks, here's all the Carnival you own. Here's the, the P and L, the profit and loss. We recommend getting out. Or you give us the go-ahead. But that's how quickly we can act.
Yeah, that's a great example to answer your question. Forgot about the old Carnival story. Now it's a true story. Great questions. Anything else? Again, thank you for allowing us to come up and present. I know we're not exactly next door. But we're not too far down the street and would love the opportunity to work for all of you. Do you have any follow-up questions? Feel free to reach out. Richard, you have my email address and if there's any unanswered questions, I'd get right back to you. Have a good rest of your night. I know there's only one more, so hang in there.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Should I, the next purpose here, should I send it in or did you get a little break?
Which is delighted.
Some familiar faces. So are you good to go? So I am somewhat of a familiar face around here. I grew up a half mile of the road. No, Matt, our faces are about each other for my whole life. So I think in terms of this, I think that's definitely a difference between most other advisors that you're going to find. It's like I said, I grew up right here in Norwalk. My company, Choice Wealth Advisors, we've been around for about fifteen years now. So we started, we've had a couple of ownership changes over the last fifteen years. But we've grown to the point now where we're at about two-hundred-and-ninety million of assets that we manage. And that's among four advisors. And we're all local advisors. So, you know, I think one of the big differences with that too is that we're connected to these communities. So we have interest in doing well by all of you folks, by the towns, constituents, all of that. Whereas, you know, a lot of other advisors, they might have all their management outsourced in that person in the corner office of Portland, doesn't come through Norwalk. They don't really have an idea what's going on here. So, you know, I think, especially with this, I find that it's helpful in those kind of cases where, you know, if we do poorly by, we're going to see about the community. You know, that's going to be a big impact and that's going to, you know, you'll be able to come up to us and say, hey, you know, what happened with this? It's kind of important. You know, it's one thing that I won't call, but it's another thing where, you know, you'll see us out of it. So to kind of backtrack, you know, Choice Wealth Advisors has been around for about fifteen years now. We have two CFPs on staff. A CFP is a certified financial planner. That's kind of the gold standard in terms of investment advisors. So thinking that like, when you go to find an accountant, you want to find a CPA. It's the same thing with us. So what that does is with the CFP standard, we hold a fiduciary responsibility to all of our clients. So in a nutshell, what that means is legally, everything we do must be in your best interest. So in this case, it's the town's best interest. Beyond that, what that means is that we don't have to buy certain things. You'll be able to see through this process that we're not salesmen, we're not slick. We don't want to try to sell you a car. So, you know, with that, nothing is commission-based. I think that's important where both of our motivations are really aligned. So we want to do as well as we can by the town. And with that, the pay is coincided with that. So I'm a partner. I became a partner at the end of two thousand nineteen. So there's three of us currently that are partners. The majority owner at this point will be retiring at the end of this year. I kind of, for me, this is very personal, obviously, being from this area. But I also owe a lot of my career to people in this area. You know, there's been a lot of people in Norwalk that put their faith in me when I first started in this business seven years ago, that I don't think I would have been able to become a partner at twenty-nine otherwise. So for me, there's lots to it on that side of things too. Where again, you know, a lot of our client base is in this area. You know, I know that we can drive through Norwalk and point at houses where we have clients' assets. So, you know, that puts us at a different, you know, advantage, I would say, in terms of there's a lot of people that are familiar with what we do. So, you know, with that said, the client size is certainly there. You know, we've grown immensely over the last five or six years. We've added a couple of advisors during that time, including myself. And the eventual plan is we'll continue to add more staff as we continue to grow. But for a central main wholly individually-owned financial services firm, two-hundred-and-ninety million dollars is a very good size for this area. And with that, you know, comes a great deal of resources that we get. So, you know, in terms of kind of the investment side of things, a lot of banks will use third-party, party money managers instead of in-house pros and cons to doing that. We take that on in terms of we make those decisions. So we have the responsibility on us in order to make sure that we're making the right investment decisions. But with that, we have partnerships with ten to fifteen different companies that we work with to help form those ideas. So it's not just us pulling the strings and do have input coming in. But with that said, you know, having us be the ones that are managing that puts more on us, on us too, in terms of we want to make sure that we're doing what's correct for the client. You know, we have more of a buy-in for that side of it. So, you know, it depends on how much you guys want to get into the nitty-gritty about the investments, that sort of thing. Investment-wise, again, we make those decisions. I think when it comes down to kind of what you guys are going to pick in terms of who you decide to go with, the money management piece, I don't want to say it's all the same, but it's very similar. So, you know, certain banks will tell certain products that they have that are above average. There, we all have access to the same things. So in terms of the money management part, I don't think that's going to be the differentiator for anyone in terms of who's the right pick for, you know, these funds. So that's where I think it comes down to, you know, definitely the relationship base of this. So again, knowing familiar faces, things like that. I always think about it in terms of, you know, who do I want to do business with? And it's typically someone I know, someone I trust. And especially with this, you know, this is a big, big responsibility. So it takes a team that really knows what they're doing investment-wise. But again, has that buy-in to know that, okay, this is a very important thing for the town. And again, I owe a lot of my career to growing up here. And part of that is me being able to kind of give back and see that, you know, this can be a great tool for the long-term success of the town that the poor guy in Portland or Augusta might not really care about. You know, for them, it's another account. So it's a count two-on-one. I think we all, I've got that feel from this that, again, this is a big thing for me in my career too, where this would be a huge, huge opportunity to be able to give back to a community that helped to raise me. And I can guarantee you that no one else can probably say that. So you know, that's kind of the quick five, ten-minute pitch. Certainly open any questions, we can get a little more into the investment side. It's up to you guys how, you know, how you want that particular.
Oh, right. I probably, everybody has the same question. So how do you, how do you do your fees and where do you land?
So what we do is we charge assets on our management fee. So what that means is, I'll backtrack a little bit. So the industry used to be much more sales-oriented. So part of the reason why I got into the business is there's a lot of really, I won't say bad advisors, bad advisors that think about themselves more than the clients. So the root of what we do is we like to help people. We genuinely like to help bring people to where they want to be financially. So, you know, I look around the table, we all have our different traits. For me, this happens to be mine. But for me, I also see how all of these different traits make this community. You know, I, we're talking about it before, my truck breaks down, I don't try to go fix it. I take it to Damon, he fixes it. Things like that. This happens to be our trade. This is what we're good at. So it used to be much more commission-based, where again, that was much more on a transaction basis. So an advisor would sell a product to a client and they would pay a fee upfront. We moved away from that about eight years ago. So what we do is we charge assets on our management fee. And what that is, is it's a percent. In this case, it's point zero-five percent of the total account balance. So the nice part is as the account goes up, our pay goes up. Your account goes down ten percent, our pay goes down ten percent. So that's what I mean in terms of our motivations are really heading in the same direction. We want to do as well as we can, but we also understand that down markets hurt us too. So it, it keeps us accountable, which is exactly what we want. But things like last year when the market's down thirty-eight percent in March, or it is down, not thirty-eight percent, you know, dollar for dollar. But then it's down at the same time. So we feel that just as much. And I think that's important because it holds us accountable for that. So we with this are willing to charge half a percent. So how that works is on a quarterly basis, a quarter of that half percent would be deducted from the account. So we're very big on transparency. So as soon as you got one of your first statements, it would have one line item on it that says advisory fee and has a dollar amount right beside it. So there's never any question about exactly, hey, Matt, where do we pay? And I think that's important. It's like when I even, you should know exactly, you know, where your money's going. So that's kind of how that works. So we keep a little bit of cash in the account for that. So it's also not something that we call as a rich, we need a check for the last quarters, you know, fees. That gets deducted out of the account automatically. So on top of that, and this kind of goes to the money management side of it. So we tend to use more what's called exchange traded funds and mutual funds in our investment strategies. So what those are is it's a basket of stocks. So think about it in terms of you're in an elevator, there's elevator on the left, elevator on the right. The one on the right has one pull cable, the one on the left has fifty pull cables. Logically, which one are you going to go into? The one with fifty pull cables. Similar kind of thought with exchange traded funds and mutual funds in terms of having that basket of stocks that lessens the risk if something were to happen to one individual company. We see it all the time where we're not proponents of buying individual companies because they can go sour very quick, very often. And a lot of the time, not for very good reasons. So things like a CEO having some sort of scandal or whatever it is, where the account goes down or the stock goes down forty percent. Well, no one could have ever predicted that. But it sends the account down quite a bit. So, you know, I like to say what we do isn't super, super glamorous, but it gets it done. And that's what's most important. So what we're looking for is very consistent returns. And that certainly doesn't mean that in the down markets, we're going to be up or vice versa. What that means is, I always like to say, we want to hit doubles as much as we can. You know, as long as we're not striking out, as long as we're not, we'd like to always hit home runs, but we also understand that's not realistic. So we take a very hands-on approach to that. But we also take a very realistic approach to that too. And especially with the town, again, we kind of base this off of kind of a moderate strategy. So not super conservative, not super, super aggressive, kind of somewhere in the middle. Um. But again, that would be kind of dive, we'll dive a little bit deeper into that as we get further into it. But with that said, you know, the town just needs to get some kind of decent, consistent returns over a long period of time. And that's what we're really good at. You know, we're really good at, most of our clients are either retirees, endowments or nonprofits. And that's exactly what they're looking for. So they're not looking for fifty percent returns, even though we'd love to have them. They're just also not looking for fifty percent drive-ins. So again, having that consistency through the years and.
That's all the fees is half a percent.
So that's where I was going to go for mutual funds, exchange traded funds. So again, we try to drive down the cost as much as we possibly can. In the long term, the lower fees of the town base, the better off the town's going to be. With that said, it's like with anything else, the cheapest isn't always the best. So in terms of the mutual funds and the exchange traded funds, we have a very deep process that we use when we pick each of those along with, you know, the allocation that we do. So, you know, we try to bring down the cost of investing as much as we can, but there are areas where the more expensive mutual fund, more expensive ETF is worth. So that's where it's hard to kind of pinpoint exactly what that is because it's always changing too. So the average currently as stands today is point four percent. So all in, it'd be point nine percent total.
Is there any wiggle room in the rate? I mean, it sounds like the expense is something that, you know, we're expecting to see three tenths of a point on it. See. You know, it could be up to six tenths. But candidly, of three finals that we've got, you're certainly premium product or a premium price.
I don't want to shoot off and say yes or no right off the bat. Again, I want to remind you that the cheapest isn't always the best, especially with this. If it's something where you're going to go buy tires for your vehicle, then maybe you can wiggle that. Am I saying that absolutely we can wiggle on that? Not necessarily. But we do have a point where this rate is, I'll be candid, half of what we typically charge for most clients. But it's also graduated schedule two. So naturally, the higher that account balances, the less you're gonna have. You know, once we get to higher millions, then it's a lesser rate. If that's going to be the determining factor, again, I'll be very candid with you guys. I really want to do this for you. This means a lot to me. If that is going to be the end all be all, then we can certainly, we can talk about that. So we don't do municipalities and I kind of talked to Richard about this too. Typically, this wouldn't be something that I would even be here for. And I'll be entirely honest as to why that is. I just see my mom's on there, by the way. So I don't think anyone else had that too with their mom. So we don't have any other municipalities at this point, but there's, there's a couple of caveats to that. So foundations are very similar and most nonprofits are very similar in terms of what the end goal is. On a higher level, investing in general is about what the end goal is. So, you know, when I talked to Richard about this, we're thinking at least five to 10 years out. Long-term investment horizon. So when I look at it that way, whether it's a municipality, you individually, the nonprofit down the road, an employer plan, whatever it might be, there's a lot of similarities there. So it's not that municipality, the management of the funds wouldn't be all that different either way. It would be different if this was, wasn't necessarily a long-term investing thing. You know, if this was something where there's going to be annual draws on it, that would be a little bit different. But I could also argue that that's very similar to a nonprofit that has certain donations that they have to give out once a year. So they're not necessarily all that different, especially investment-wise. So, you know, I know there's banks that'll say that they specialize in this. I'll be very frank, it's not that different. So we all can kind of have a specialty. For me personally, this typically wouldn't be something that we would go into a proposal for, for the sheer fact that, again, it will just take a lot of time. All this takes a lot of time. For me, this is a personal thing, being from the town, wanting to, you know, maybe get back on that. So I definitely understand the question in terms of, you know, do we not have the experience municipality-wise? But we have the breadth of experience otherwise that I don't think it makes a big, big difference. You know, the investment part is going to be pretty similar no matter where it is.
And one of the questions we asked both of the other firms was, what's the main contact? Is it you? I mean, how often do you meet with us? What if we have a, Richard has an issue?
So that's where, so we have a very team mentality at the office. So a lot of the times advisors are very singular in terms of their sales corps is they want to be, well, God forbid they shared any information with the advisor inside them because of that. Right or wrong is what it is. We have a very different collaborative atmosphere. So I would be the main contact. But we also have three other advisors and other support staff in the office that's available if I'm not available. So for example, I just got back from vacation today. Richard talked to my assistant a couple of times. Hopefully he's okay.
It was.
Okay, good. Um, I think that's an example of, we're all human. So I think all too often advisors don't have contingency plans for, again, God forbid, something happened long-term or just short-term. So I have new clients coming to us that tried to get in touch with their advisor on their vacation and they couldn't, and they needed money from their account. Well, that's not good if you can't get money, your money, in a week or so. That's pretty bad. So, you know, we're structured so we have four advisors in the office every day, support staff person in there. I'm on vacation, I have a sick day, one of the other three guys can pick up right where I left off. Um, so to answer your question, I would need to make contact. But anyone else in the office would be more than qualified to answer any question if I haven't been not be there. Um. In terms of these kind of meetings, it's entirely up to you guys. I built a house five miles down the road. So if you need me here whenever it is, I can be there. But typically with, you know, downed nonprofits, those sorts of board meetings, we typically do those once or twice a year. Um. The other thing too is sometimes the people around this table change. So I think it's important to have kind of consistency on this side of things to kind of relay as the seats change. Again, if you guys all want to be here forever, then great and we hope you do. But, um. So we do a lot of meetings with new board members too, just kind of educate them on where things are. You know, kind of what the goal of this is to someone, you know, coming into Lindsay's seat fresh might not know exactly what Lindsay thought when we first did this. And it's good to kind of, you know, be able to refresh that person, kind of get them on the track that, you know, we were thinking was first start. So in terms of communication, we're open five days a week. I'm available as much as, yeah, as much as you need. Um. So, yeah.
Oh, I can't think of anything else off the top of my head. Does anybody else have anything? If you had been holding our fund for the last ten years, what would you have expected that rate of return to be?
If anyone answers you with a very precise answer, you shouldn't run away anyway. For that, a forty, we're also talking about a very strange time in the market. So we've definitely been spoiled over the last ten years in terms of market returns. I fully do not expect that to happen for the next ten years. And there's a wide variety of reasons that we could sit here and let them talk about those. With that said, if we were going to put some kind of average number on that, a sixty, forty, you're looking at six to seven percent, somewhere in there. Again, they're all going to be the same. So if someone else is saying that they're going to do sixty, forty and they're going to beat the market, they're not telling the truth. It's just not how it works. Part of that is also part of the reason why we're here. You know, if the bank was paying you a really good percentage on CDs and that sort of thing, well, that also makes my life easier too. We have safe investments that have decent returns. Well, ten, fifteen years ago, you could match that with some stock investments and you'd do very well. Now we're in a situation where you almost have to add more stocks because interest rates are basically nothing. So you have to have some kind of offset to that. So again, that's my very vague, hard to put a number on it because it depends what we're offering for. And it's also, you know, we're active during the market fluctuations and all those sorts of things. So it's hard to kind of have a static view of what that looks like. So even the returns that we put in the proposal, that was assuming that we didn't do anything the entire time, which obviously would not be the case. So that's where it's really hard to kind of put a pinpoint exactly what the returns will look like, but.
So if I've learned anything tonight, they all three said the same thing. Somebody tells they're going to beat the market, run the other way.
Well, that's good. That makes me feel better too. That is good.
Uh, right. No, uh, right. I, I don't do a job here. I can't think of anything else. I think you've covered everything that we need to really compare everybody. Uh. Right. I think if we have any more questions, you can have Richard read them. Uh, two weeks from today, we're probably gonna get back on the subject again as more, um, and either discuss or seek more information. And then make a decision from there. So in my mind, in the next four weeks, we'll be able to do something if everything goes on. So, you know, a real look to make a change for everybody's best, so.
That'll be on the public meeting. And I would say definitely let me know if it comes down to the price, because we can.
Yeah, we can, I might as well just ask right now. Scrape and the pencil because it adds up, you know, and I get personal connection or whatever, but I know we're gonna have. We have kind of, it doesn't directly apply to this, but when we have purchasing, we give a local allowance, whatever, even if we exhaust a heavy local allowance, we're still not hurting my gap. So, you know, we've got to, when I give a look to the public and say this is the reason why I'm paying a burden.
Um, what I would say is be very cognizant of any hidden costs, whether that be third-party money managers, things like that. Um, unfortunately, this industry is notoriously not very transparent about pricing.
That may be a question too, of the other two. I mean, they told us the fees, but it's the other fees.
For trades.
So was the, as a half a percent fee, right, is it something that we're not seeing in the background? It's the other four percent.
Yeah, oftentimes there's a lot of layers to it. So that's where, again, this is all in the point.
Was that the total, total cost?
I believe so. We'll double back on that. And I think, again, I will keep you guys here a little longer. Um, especially like if you're looking at the banks too. At the end of the day, this sounds very poor, but the advisors of the banks aren't employees of the bank. They're gonna move, they're gonna have different contact people. I own this business, I'm a partner in this business. I have a lot riding on this business. So I think that's a differentiator in terms of we call it musical chairs in the financial advisor industry, where again, the bank industry is just a lot different, where they don't have as much buying. You know, again, Matt, you know how it is, you go home, it's up to you. It's the same. There's extra layers of motivation when it comes to that. Um. But I think in terms of, you know, that contact person, they change a lot. So that person isn't necessarily going to be the same person here 10 years from now, whereas I'll be here until I'm hopefully sixty-two if.
You need to go more aggressively with your investing.
I thought it'd be truthful, but. Well, that gets. So yeah, I thank you guys for the time. It's nice to see some familiar faces again. It sounds good. Thanks, guys.
Okay, right. That leaves other business. You got nothing for them? No, no. Right, so let's lose the gentleman.